Welcome, Jason Voice. You are running for city council. For the open seat, is there a number to that seat?
Yes, hello, Ms. McCory, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this beautiful sunny afternoon. The position that I'm running for is position five.
Position five, thank you very much. Okay, so Jason, our first question for you today is please describe the qualifications and leadership skills you would bring to city council.
Thank you. Well, I believe I would provide quite a few leadership skills and also some experience. I believe that one of the strongest assets any leader has is to listen. I currently am the vice president of our company and I handle the employment aspects. And as far as the city's concerned, is prior to me joining the Planning Policy Commission, where my esteemed colleagues were kind enough to vote me as vice chair about a month ago. Prior to that, I was also the HOA president of Arrington Place, which is a condominium here, condominium complex here in Issaquah of 130 different units. So quite a big community, enjoyed it thoroughly. I was there on the board for three years and I believe I was president for a little over two. So I believe one of the strongest assets that I'll bring is, as far as leadership, is the ability to listen and the ability to evolve with your thinking. I think it's one of the strategic things that most good leaders have. To be inflexible or unflexible is not something that great leaders typically share. And I believe taking in new information, being able to synthesize that information and render a proper and good judgment is highly important. I think the goal of the city council is basically you are somewhat of a jury and actually the real sense of the word. So to be able to take in information, to hear all sides, all sides concerned, which are all of our residents, and then render hopefully what is a great, a great outcome for the entire city. And so I think listening, and then my previous experiences as being on the board, as well as also being a part of the city with the planning policy and the mayor's ad hoc recovery task force. So I'd like to think those things would help me in terms of my ability to play a good role and a proper role on the city council.
Okay, great, perfect, and kudos, that was exactly two minutes. And for the audience, just so you know, Jason has two minutes to answer each question. All right, so the next question. Which local and regional organizations do you see being the most beneficial to leveraging your position in this election?
I think the Chamber of Commerce. That's an easy one. Thank you for that setup. I think the chamber is incredibly important to our community. I think great communities live and thrive by having a great business environment. So a healthy business climate creates a healthy city climate. And I truly believe that. One of the reasons we're able to afford some of our great schools, our fantastic parks, one of the reasons we're able to protect our amenities is because we have such a strong business climate and we need to keep that in mind. All of these things are important to Issaquah. And I believe if you asked anyone, one of the reasons our desirability here in the city is so extremely high is because of those wonderful amenities. And we're able to do that by having a healthy business climate. So I want to be the biggest cheerleader that I can as far as helping business, letting the people who know their business, I mean, every single entrepreneur is a genius in what they're doing, I mean, they are the expert. So if we're able to either push or propel, or at least get out of the way, I know these entrepreneurs will be able to make the most of what they have without city government being a stumbling block. So I believe the chamber is one, if not probably one of the most important regional organizations that we have, definitely in the city. And obviously, because of our city's determination to keep us environmentally sound, I believe also the environmental boards and things like that, because that is something that everyone in this city appreciates. Again, the school district is also another organization that I think is incredibly important to parents here. I had the pleasure of speaking to Mr. Superintendent Thiele, had a wonderful conversation with him. So I don't know if there's one better than the other, but I believe those ones are definitely important to our residents and those are the ones that I would hopefully champion in return would hopefully they would champion me.
Great, great answer, thank you. Okay, and I'm going to take a moment here to just, I should have done this before. I'm going to change so that it'll go to, it'll be big screen the next time you're talking, Jason. So we'll just kind of go back and forth like that. All right, so our third question is the chamber is the catalyst and champion for the business community. Washington's economic competitiveness and the vitality of any community is reliant on healthy businesses. Please tell us what you would do to ensure the needs of the business community are not only heard, but equitably considered in the decision-making process at city council.
So as far as being equitably heard, as you heard me say before, I think one of the strongest roles a leader has is to listen. I think some people get these ideas reversed, that a good leader always has the answer, that they don't need commentary, or they don't need help or instruction. And I think that's the exact opposite. Usually leaders do less talking and more listening. I believe that's what makes effective leaders. So as far as being an ally or a friend on the city council, I would simply reach out. I would simply let them understand that they have a friend in me and that they could reach out to me at any time on any given issue. Again, the city and the business of the city is important. We need a smart and efficient city government. But we also need to realize, one of the reasons the city government is successful is because of the monies and the other attributes that our business community has to offer. So I would take that to heart every time we make a decision that may impact our fellow businesses. As someone who has a small business here in Issaquah, who's also part of the chamber, it's very important, it's very important the voices are heard. It's very important that they're considered upon any type of thing that impacts people's basic way to make a living. And again, we have a lot of wonderful small businesses, in particular this year after the pandemic. It's going to be really important that not only do they have a seat at the table, because they represent the best of us. And I think that will be my consideration moving forward as if I have the opportunity and the honor of being on the city council.
Very well said. All right, thank you. Question number four, Jason. What is your position on the water blending facility being discussed for Issaquah?
Great question. And I personally have the belief that having a water blending facility is probably appropriate. I believe that the city, we want to be a serious city. And right now, I believe two thirds of our water is provided regionally, with only one third coming through our groundwater sources. Now, I know there's concern about fluoride, some people, different things. But ultimately, what's going to be a more equitable distribution of water and what's going to be easier to gauge by metrics is going to be having a facility where we can do that and provide the same product all across the board. I believe that strategic cities have strategic visions. And I believe if we want to be a serious city, it's going to be important that we behave like one. And while I know that won't make everybody happy, again, when the city wants to continue to talk about more equality and equity, that would be one area where I think you could get that. And there's very few resources like water when it comes to development and to the human condition. So I'm actually in favor for the blending facility, because I think it will provide a more stable process, easier to gauge the metrics, and again, more of an equitable fashion for the entire city. So there will not be have me's and have me nots.
Important, thank you. Okay, question five. Do you believe the central Issaquah plan is working? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
I think the central Issaquah plan, as far as the vision, is a good vision. If it's working, it's one of those things that I truly believe will kind of be a war of attrition, decision by decision by decision. Right now, I believe the central Issaquah area is currently 70% impervious parking surfaces. So if we truly want to add density, that to me would be the appropriate place to do it. Where I think there needs to probably be more consideration is what are we doing for our redevelopment and development down there? What are we doing for our developers in order to encourage them to take those, take those different things on? So I think, yes, I think the vision is appropriate. I think there is no doubt that our wonderful, large retailers down there take up quite a bit of land. And I believe it's a good place to actually put some beautiful buildings where we can add the density that we're going to need for future growth projections. Now, do I think it's fundamentally firing on all cylinders? Harder to state, but I think, I think like I said, if the city is able and willing to work with some of the code in order to help redevelop that area, not make it cumbersome, I think we could see that vision happen in the next 10 to 20 years.
Great, thank you. All right, question number six. And just so you know, there's nine questions, so we are two thirds of the way there. Question six is about transportation. Transportation on the east side continues to be a major concern for Issaquah due to the tremendous growth planned in Bellevue and the rest of the region. What would you do to help get vehicles off roads and create better options for commuting instead?
The million dollar question, there it is, right? People live and die in the city of Issaquah by our traffic. And unfortunately, I've been here over 15 years and I have only seen it get worse. Sad to tell, but that is truly unfortunately the situation. You know, I think one thing that has to be done is proper planning. I admire the city of Bellevue. They had a vision 40 years ago and they have executed it very well. And yes, they are going to be receiving a lot of growth. And in turn, we will be receiving a lot of growth and also more traffic. Unfortunately, we can't go back to the days where we could discuss the bypass and all we can really do at the moment is look forward. I think it's good that the city is working on things like the parks and the necklaces, looking at code, maybe how to make these neighborhoods more integrated, where people can walk through neighborhoods versus being stopped by coal stacks. But I don't know if there's really a great silver bullet. And maybe that's not the answer I'm supposed to give. I think mitigation, things like taking care of our streets, making sure that we have proper funding for our infrastructure is in the capital improvement project is important. I don't know if we're going to get an opportunity to see something like the 18 bypass again anytime soon. That would obviously probably be a much bigger help, but it wouldn't be a fantasy if people are driving. So I think the multimodal system that the city is continuing to look at, making it more bike pedestrian friendly will help. But unfortunately, I don't, I don't see anything on the horizon that is going to make any of us feel a whole lot better. The sound transit is obviously another thing to discuss, but even that would be 10 to 20 years out. So I think just mitigating where we can, improving the traffic structures, obviously Front Street. I live on Front Street, so I can tell you stories and stories and stories. And in fact, I live at the end of it. So I am well aware of our city's Gordian knot.
Okay, thank you. And it is a million dollar question, I agree. Question seven. Again, kind of around transportation. Due to our growing transportation needs, what would you do to first reinstate metro transit that has been lost? And then increase metro transit from the southeast King County into Issaquah?
So let's unpack that a little bit. As far as how I would reintroduce King County Metro, I think we would want to look at the, and I believe I stated this in the questionnaire, but I think we want to look at the routes coming into the city as priority. These are people that spend money in our city, that they occupy our businesses. So those would be the first ones that I would want to see a green light for, deciding which routes actually lead into our fair city. And then obviously, letting them come in, play, work, all of those things contributing to revenue and taxes for the city of Issaquah. And the second part of your question, I apologize.
What would you do to increase metro transit from southeast King County to Issaquah?
I would have to look, I guess, at the metro routes and see who we could talk to. I know there's regional boards on the city council that work with transit. You know, I'm not privy to those conversations. So one of the reasons I'd like to get on city council is to have those conversations and to see, because again, I think the more people in the city that are working, playing, and living, the better. So again, how can we get some of these routes established from southeast King County up into Issaquah is important, because again, they come and they spend their dollars here. And that's what all of us are ultimately interested, especially with the Chamber of Commerce.
Melting pot, as they say. All right, two more questions. Our eighth question is please briefly explain how you would work with our partners to ensure the funding and implementation of the I-90 under-over crossing and sound transit?
I would work, I would work with them in the same way that I try to work with everybody, which is reaching out, making myself available. I think that, I mean, the common, the common phrase is that diplomacy is through relationships. People learn to meet one another. When you put a face to it, making yourself available, I think, is a big part of working within these different organizations in order to find success. Sometimes people think they can do it through a letter. Sometimes people think we can do it possibly through a Zoom call, which we've all been doing. But I think personal relationships is a big part of seeing any type of success, whether it's foreign policy, or whether it's something is the I-90 under-over, or also the sound transit. I think the sound transit is, would be a boon for the city. I am, like everybody, I share some concerns with it. But you know, to have it not come through Issaquah, once this thing is developed in 20 years would be a grave mistake. And it probably right up there with the bypass of 2000. So it's imperative that we work with these people to make sure it happens for us. And that would be a goal. And again, the die has been cast. You know, we've already crossed the Rubicon. So it's important that, again, we make this happen, we do it properly in order to service our city. Because again, as we can already tell, it's going up through Bellevue. It's going through Kirkland and Redmond, and we want to be a part of that. It would be a real shame if we were left out of that particular situation, especially with those bigger cities. So again, we want to share in that, we want to make sure it happens. So again, meeting people, making yourself available and listening and being a great cheerleader for Issaquah and trying to get the best deal that we can for ourselves.
Great, thank you. All right, Jason, this has been wonderful. We have one more question for you. And that is the threat of relying exclusively on one energy source puts our national security at risk. What role could the city play in ensuring a diversity of energy resources to power our homes and businesses?
That's an interesting question, because I believe most of the region gets our energy from PSE. It's kind of a wonderful monopoly they have over there. You know, I think just having, I think having a variety of different ways is important. But as far as the different ways we can do energy here, you know, we are limited with some of the amenities that we have. We don't have things like the Snowqualmy, the Snowqualmy Falls. So I think, like I said, not demonizing certain industries, making sure we have an abundance of different energies is a good thing. One of the things we saw last year during the pandemic is the government, the federal government actually leveraged three different vaccines for Operation Ward Speed, where some people felt that was a mistake. It actually, now we have such an abundance, we're giving millions and tens of millions of doses to other countries, and that's wonderful, that's a great thing. So again, being able to divest and have different, and it's kind of like a stock, right? Or a mutual fund. So it's good to have as many, it's good to have a strong energy fund that we can all pull from and benefit from. But I sincerely would have to look a little bit harder at how we as a city would be able to do it. Those are wonderful conversations and they're ones that I look forward to having if given the opportunity to be able to be part of the city council.
Wonderful. Jason, that is great. And I will say we asked some tough questions. So I'm impressed by your knowledge of all of these issues. We want to allow you to take a few minutes here at the end just to share with our viewers, because again, this will go out. We will post your interview on our YouTube channel and share the link with people all over Issaquah and the business owners. And we want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak directly to them. So do you want to take these last few minutes and share with them any thoughts, anything we didn't cover here today?
No, I appreciate that very much, Ms. McCory. And it's been a pleasure being with you here this evening. As far as something to say, you know, I want to be what I'd like to be, what I hope to be is a councilperson that would, you know, listen to all of our residents. And again, I do fundamentally believe, and I have a bit of a built-in bias because of working for a small business the entirety of my life. I do believe healthy communities start with healthy business opportunities. So it's imperative that we make sure that we are cheerleaders for our businesses here in the city. We have some wonderful big businesses, such as obviously Costco, being our leader as far as employment, Evergreen Ford, you know, Rally Properties. There are wonderful employers here in the city, such as Voice Construction. If you've never heard of them, take a look at them, so.
Are they hiring?
They are hiring, yes, they are. But I would just like to see our city, like I said, be able to be competitive in a very competitive region. We have, like I said, I admit, I had mentioned earlier that I admire Bellevue. I think Kirkland's done a great job, Redmond, they have some of those built-in advantages that we don't. Although I would think that as terms of quality of life, we have just as many, if not more, advantages. So how do we leverage that, right? You know, they have some of the businesses, they have some of the infrastructure. We have the green hillsides, we have certain things that we can leverage. So I would like to see Issaquah become a hub of business. You know, one of the things that I was talking to with is that some of these other cities are kind of shunning some of the manufacturing jobs, because they just want to be high-tech. And that's, so what I would like to say to those type of businesses is come home. You know, come home, come down I-90, come to us, you know. But we want to create an environment where people know that. It's known throughout the Puget Sound that Issaquah is a welcoming place for business. And that when possible, we simply stay and let the best people who know how to run their business do it. I think as far as the city itself, I'd like to see them run as a smart business. Again, a smart and efficient and lean city hall is important. I think sometimes city governments probably do more than they should. And so it's my goal, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, and I do believe I will, you know, it's my goal to make sure that that is constantly a drumbeat that is heard within the city chambers. And that, again, our residents would have not only a friend in the council chambers, but also someone who understands their concerns. The streetery is also a wonderful example of something where our local entrepreneurs came up with an idea. And I'm so glad that I was able to be at a meeting where some concerns were brought up, but they weren't brought up initially, because we were all going through COVID. And I think that's a type of give and take. You try some certain things, you learn from them, and then you evolve. So I think, like I said, you let people innovate. And sometimes there needs to be corrections, as you'll see this year with the streetery, where it's going to be scaled back, because we don't want to harm anybody. But like I said, I think people who conduct their business are probably the best experts to conduct their business. And that's what I would say to my fellow chamber out there listening to this tonight. So yeah, I appreciate the time, McCory, and that's what I would say.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jason Voice, running for District Five. This is great getting to chat with you, getting to understand your positions a little bit more. It's so important that we're able to have this little bit of insight into who you are and where you stand and your knowledge on the issues before we all go to the polls. And so with that, I want to thank you. And I'm going to just turn off our recording right now. So if, if I can, if it's going to let me. Okay. So Jason, I'm just going to edit this bit out, since we took a few seconds. It's not letting me turn it off, but great job, great job. So I want to, is it nerve-wracking at all? You're used to it, or have you done a lot of these yet?
I have not. So is it nerve-wracking? No. I typically like people, I like talking. So that part doesn't bother me, I like getting to know people. The camera doesn't bother me at all. I know some people get really, I think maybe it's some PPC conditioning, like I don't even recognize it. I think the only thing that, between you and I, the only thing that's a little is, is it's hard to know, because again, this is my first time ever doing it. And again, I know I'm running against someone who has been a council member before. So sometimes, you know, the little dark thoughts get in your head, was that a good enough answer? You know, because again, I've never done it and I've never seen some of those things that one of my opponents have seen. So it makes me second guess myself sometimes in that way. And I know that I know, I know that there's a lot more to learn on some of the questions that even you posed. But like I said, I've never been ashamed of that. I've never been ashamed of being someone who either has no problem saying, I don't know, or I need to know more. That's never bothered me. But you know, kind of second guessing myself is like, what would he, oh, what would they do? Because.
And you know.
Standing here before.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think you're all going to be at the Issaquah Highlands Forum next week. So I think you'll get to see more. I don't know that Issaquah City Council candidates have really had a lot of opportunities before. Because it really, you know, when I think back just in the six years I've been here, when I first got here, the chamber didn't do this. And Issaquah Highlands didn't. I think the two that did were Rotary and Kiwanis. You know, you got invited to Rotary meeting and Kiwanis meeting and they got to ask you questions. But that was it. So I wouldn't worry about it. I think this is all pretty new to everyone. But it's, I think that what you have is, is having been on a commission and especially on PPC gives you a great insight into some of these current issues. Because it is the current issues. And I will say, just the other thing that I think that you mentioned a few times that resonates with me anyway, is the fact that there has to be that long-term vision and planning. We can't just, you know, sometimes it feels like we're just putting Band-Aids on stuff, or we're just voting on an issue and it doesn't really, you know, it's just like, well, how does it tie into everything else? And perhaps it does, and I just don't see it. But you know, if, I think if more of the long-term visioning were out there, you know, your everyday citizens would probably be more willing to accept the changes. And sometimes they're painful growth, you know, changes that we have to go through. If we knew, you know, what was there on the other side. And I think that's what you're, you know, what I've heard from you is that it's just like, we got to get there. You know, we can't not have water, right? We've got to address the transportation, it's only going to get worse, we can't go back.
Yeah, I know. And one of the things, to be honest with you, is again, is this is my first time, you know, ever doing anything like this. So you know, there's definitely some falling down and getting back up. And I'm fine with that. Like I said, I don't very, I don't really get embarrassed very easy. I think for me though, is, you know, it took me a while before I got comfortable in the Planning Policy Commission. And it was, it's not because I'm a wallflower, you know, I enjoy getting in the debate. And like I said, sometimes playing devil's advocate or this or that, that's never, but I don't just simply talk to talk, you know. And so this is a kind of a different arena where I'm, you know, I haven't really had the opportunity to formulate like a really good response or really get enough information. Because again, I'm not shy about telling people, give me your information, you know, I'll take your idea and make it better. You know, I've never needed to be the person that got credit. You know, I've never needed to be the person that got credit for something. That doesn't bother me, but you know, it kind of. This rolling and learning thing and having to speak it out, because again, the first year on PPC, I was pretty quiet. And again, it's not because I'm a quiet person, I just. I don't need to hear my own voice, and I know some people do.
Right.
So I, it's something I gotta get over, but it's.
Yes, you do, because everybody at city council has to say why they're gonna vote for or against something before the vote's taken.
You know, I also got a lot better than asking people for money, you know, so there's a lot of things I've got to get pretty good at. But I'm I'm learning and I'm finding my way, but like I said, some of those, and and again, it's not that I think I'm in the going the wrong direction, but. Sometimes I kind of second guess myself on some of the, you know, particularly like some of the questions here or at the Realtors place. Is because, you know, like I said, I've spent a couple months trying to get my thing up and running. And you know, I'm trying to eat and read and eat for breakfast, a strategic plan and for dinner, having the, you know, the C I P in front of me, so. I still really haven't got any outside, because it's all moving so quick, so sometimes.
It is. Well, you're you're authentic and again, you know more than most, so. I will share with you a couple of the questions in there and especially around the transportation and bringing. Bus services back is simply because I think, you know, we all talk about live, work, play, right? But we also have to address the fact that part of our traffic comes from the fact that we are a service community. And we have over six thousand. Commuters that come to Issaquah to go to work every single day. And that that includes the weekend because it's retail. You know, Costco's open seven days a week, Target's open seven days. You know, and those people live southeast of us, because that's where they can afford to live. And so, you know, yes, we want everybody to live in Issaquah that works in Issaquah, but that's not. Realistic in a lot of cases. And so one of the things, just so you know, we're trying to kind of bring awareness to. Is part of the responsibility we have. Is to non-residents. It's to those people that that. Provide the services that our residents want, right? You know, we like all these conveniences. We like having over a hundred different restaurants to choose from, right? But that comes at a price and that comes at bringing in a workforce. And so, so just so you know, you're gonna hear more and more conversation from us in that regard over the next few years. Because we're afraid we're not gonna get King County Metro back. To begin with, and then it's just like, it just, I mean, it puts again, six thousand employees on Issaquah Hobart Road every single day.
I live on that road.
I know.
No, I mean, I didn't see, this is the wonderful thing, Kathy, is this is what I really, this is one of the reasons I'm doing it, because I like to learn. I, again, I I love reading, I love learning. And like I said, I I know that I don't know a lot, but the other day, you know, I was talking with the gentleman from Talus. And I had a wonderful discussion with him and he kind of showed me some things and I I never thought about it. And like I said, he was showing me kind of where the developers had. Had really kind of done some things that were on the cheap. And like he was saying, you know, yeah, we want to bring developers in, we want them. But you know, what his point was is, you know, they put in these trees that were like this big for a, this big, you know, strip of land. And within ten years, those whole sidewalks are gonna rupture. So again, as much as I want to be pro development and pro builders, I mean, that's what I love. I like hearing the other side, and I've never had a problem admitting. One, that I'm wrong, or two, that someone has a better idea than me. I I'm okay. I got enough hugs when I was growing up, you know, I, it's fine with me.
Most people don't learn that till they're my age, Jason, so good for you. Alright, listen, I know you have a very special date to get to, so I'm gonna let you go, okay?